Minutes from May 12. Any comments or corrections?
I have one question and I have one addition I'd like to pose for minutes. Question is that. I believe that we refer in the minutes to a condition that talks about red line plans. And I wanted to ask staff exactly what is a red line plan and who puts that together?
Red line plans are. Plans that have actually been submitted by the applicant and they go through our review process. So it's. They include the feedback from the city engineer and other city staff that there's notations and stuff that are made on those. And that gets returned to the applicant so that those changes and revisions can be incorporated into their their final. What terms of final engineering that gets submitted for permitting?
Are those all the comments from the reviewing agencies?
Yes.
Including planning department's comments too?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. My addition, I'd like to. Ask that. On page six of the minutes. And we're talking about the Grove project. Right before the motion was made that the item be continued. I'd like to ask that we insert the following on the. Last paragraph. Right before the last sentence. Reads. Commissioner Larson asked the commission to be aware of consider the project water allocation memo. Needed May 3rd, 2022, Kip Wiley City Utilities Operation Director. That is provided for the planning commissions and the city council's consideration. Just to insert that sentence.
You have that writing to give to the.
Yeah.
I just, there's one other quick, speaking of redlining, bottom of page four, the top of page five, perhaps it should be black, not red.
It should, that's. Part of when I'm preparing the minutes and highlight things to make sure that I circle back to them and. Obviously, I failed to circle back one more time and change the color.
Corrections. Motion to approve.
Move to approve as modified.
Second.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Chairman Hart Skills?
Yes. Okay, it takes us to public hearings. Before we get started on our public hearings, we have two tonight. I just go through little procedures that will be following. We'll be looking for a presentation from staff with them go through their presentation, take questions from the. Commission, then we'll open it up to the applicant if they have any comments or additions or presentations at that point. And then we'll have further questions from commissioners. I will then move into. A public hearing, we'll hear from the audience in public, let them have their opportunity to make comments regarding the project. And once that's been exhausted, we'll close those comments and have discussion among the. Commissioners, questions possibly to the. Advocate. And staff after we close public hearing, we will take an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant to address any concerns that have been addressed. After we had discussion, we'll entertain motions to move forward or deny the application. So. That being said, let's go ahead and start with our first item for the night. It's continuation from May 12th, CUP SPR 2022-02. The Grove at Spruce Haven, CUP, considered request by Joe Kent. For a conditional use permit. And for the construction of six two inner detached single. Family dwellings on 2.18 acres in a portion of the west half of the northwest quarter of section 24. Township 12 South Range 69 West of the sixth principal brilliant. Also known as Kerwood's tracks. At an address of 920 Spruce Haven Drive in the multifamily residential suburban zone. Staff, opportunity for your presentation.
Thank you. As we discussed last week, this is an application for. Or sorry, two weeks ago. This is a, an application for six duplexes at 920 Spruce Haven Drive. This address is zoned multifamily residential suburban. However, this use of multifamily is a conditional use in the zone district. Here you can see our current conditions. And here we have our revised site plan from the applicant. Items of note that have changed, the turnaround for the emergency services as well as the visitors has moved to the north. There is adequate snow. Storage locations at the end of that drive as well as at the end of the primary drive. Tracked A is reserved for drainage. Lot 13 is again. Not proposed to be developed at this time. You can see that all of the duplexes are. Access from the primary drive, which is access from Spruce Haven Drive. Here is our revised landscaping plan. The new trees are in green and the existing trees are in black. So you can see them both on this plan. The proposed elevations have not been altered. They have maintained the current design. For conditional use permits. The comprehensive plan has three goals and objectives that this application meets. Community and character design goal 1.1, 1.24. Promote designs that incorporate a variety of housing types and mix of land uses. Housing objective 1.1 to promote stable, safe, diverse neighborhoods throughout Woodland Park. That provide a wide range of housing options and link residents to destinations to learn, workshop, recreate and relax. And sustainable environment action 1.1.7. Encourage the redevelopment of underutilized sites to relieve pressure on undeveloped land and to promote increased density and mixed use development. The site is in the future land use map is community commercial. Our conditional use permit criteria. This is a summary slide showing that they do comply with all of these regulations. I will go through them in greater detail. For needing mitigation, the request to rezone the property was approved with the intent of facilitating the proposed development. For public health and welfare, the use poses no threat to public health and welfare. For property value, the proposed development would not substantially affect adjacent property values. For harmony, the proposed development will create an appropriate transition between the lower density residential to the north and west and the commercial and industrial uses to the south and east. For city regulations, the proposed use has been reviewed by relevant departments and agencies to ensure compliance with the applicable regulations. Just to expand on this one a little bit, the applicant did meet with reviewing agencies after our last hearing. And has come into compliance on those items that were in question before. For traffic, the site will be accessed by Spruce Haven Drive by one central private road with driveways extending from each side of the private road. The applicant estimates that the development will produce approximately 109 vehicle trips per day. The parking calculation for residential development requires 35 spaces. The proposed development, excuse me, I, there is a typo on this slide. Will provide 48 parking spaces, including 24 garage spaces. The, for environment, the proposed development will not substantially change sites topography. There's a 10 foot draining drainage and utilities meant running along the outside and again, track A is designated for stormwater detention. For utilities. The water main in Spruce Haven will need to be extended 275 feet to Coraline Street and the developers would need to seek city council approval for multifamily water tap allocations. For public safety, no significant safety hazards. For aesthetics, the proposed development currently complies with the design criteria they have since the writing of the staff report. Provided color schemes for your review. Site plan review. Again, this is a summary slide showing that they do comply with all of the criteria. City objectives and policies, they do meet the, the goals and objectives I outlined before. For code compliance, the development meets all required codes, building infrastructure and drainage codes will be reviewed at time of building permit. For traffic, again. The applicant estimates approximately 109 vehicle trips per day and will provide 48 parking spaces, including 24 garage spaces. For drainage. Site grade grading and drainage are reviewed by the city engineer and must be approved through a grading permit. There are no onsite environmentally significant features, natural or manmade hazards or streams. For water and wastewater, the water main in Spruce Haven will need to extend 275 feet to Coraline Street. The developers would need to see city council approval for multifamily water tap allocations. Again, there are no significant public safety concerns. For design and landscaping, the proposed development complies with the architectural design criteria, including the color schemes. The proposed development. Will also provide outdoor screening from the adjacent tow yard and outdoor storage operation. Staff recommendation has not changed since our last review. Staff recommends that. The planning commission recommend a city council approval of the conditional use permit based on the findings contained in the staff report and as presented at public hearings. Subject to the following conditions, one, all development impact fees must be paid prior to ZDP issuance. Including but not limited to tap fees, stormwater capital improvement fees, transportation capital fees, et cetera. Fee shall be calculated concurrently with the ZDP review. Number two, all exterior lighting, if any, shall be downcast and shielded with a temperature of 3,000 or warmer, there shall not exceed 25 feet in height. Pursuant to the municipal code, at least 40% of the parcel shall remain as open space. Pursuant to the municipal code, healthy existing significant trees shall be preserved to the extent reasonably feasible. And may be used to satisfy landscaping and open space requirements. Number five. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the property owner shall submit for and receive approval of a, a final site plan. A final plat and infrastructure zoning development permit. A zoning development permit and building permits for all new construction. Including one, all civil and construction drawings, two, final drainage report, three, final landscaping plan. Four, final site plan, five, final floor plan and elevations. Six, final grading sediment and erosion control plan. Seven, final utility plan, eight, final photometric plan, nine, stormwater permit and stormwater management plan. Condition number six, prior to council public hearings, the applicant shall make revisions to the site plan as indicated on the red line plans. Number seven, prior to the conveyance of any dwelling unit, a townhome flat shall be approved by the city and recorded with the Teller County clerk recorder. A townhome flat shall include the covenants describing limits on the property and maintenance of all common areas. Prior to the approval of the townhome flat, park capital fees shall be submitted and payable the rate established when the application is submitted. We do have applicant slides when their presentation is ready, but this concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff at this point?
I do. Could we go to the revised site plan? Could you show me, I couldn't tell by looking at this drawing where that turnaround was really located. I assume it was at the end of the street, but I couldn't see anything. Oh, there it is. I missed it. Okay. Number two. I looked at the site plan that was submitted with the packet from the applicant. And I was looking for. Some kind of note onsite plan talking about the intent of track A and lot 13. We talked about that, but I didn't see where it was documented on the revised plan. Is it there?
I will let the applicant speak to that.
Okay. And my last question is, again, maybe it's just. The eyes of an old man looking at this, I could not see the screening wall or fence that's located adjacent to. The towing outfit in the open space.
They do have a dotted line along the property boundary. Indicating that fence.
So it actually goes through that last lot 13?
There seem to be encroachment issues at the current time that the applicant and the. Adjacent landowner are working through. So currently that is shown to accommodate that encroachment.
And what is the design of the fences?
This six foot opaque, I believe it's meant to be wood.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
I, I have one item too, I think. I guess I'd like to call everyone's attention to anytime we have a conditional use permit to be considered and just we remind us all. Looking at our order 1857 040. The standards for conditional use permits are intended only as minimum necessary for review. An application for a conditional use permit, even though meeting the minimal standards of this chapter and code may be denied. If it is determined that development use is not in the best interest of the city. And let me ask first, I gather Chelsea indicated you review that you believe the development as, as revised and vice like plan meets all codes.
I do believe that it meets all codes and further I believe that it does meet several of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan.
All right, so then, so let me ask the staff's recommendation, is that an assessment then of something in the best interest of the city or is it more code compliance?
It's more code compliance, but it is also guided by that overall comprehensive plan. Which you would like to think was generated in the best interest of the city. You know, and with a large amount of community participation that that is the guiding document that says this is how we want to grow and develop.
Okay, and actually, so. My, my sense is that what you're talking about in reviewing this isn't necessarily if a multi, if a multifamily development is appropriate there. It's really is this development as it's laid out in the best interest of the city. And I'm not. Predetermining what that, that outcome is and that's something I think we, we should be considering. It's not, just doesn't comply or is this a type of use that might be good enough? It's, is, is this development in the best interest of the city? That's the standard we should be looking at when we decide to approve this or, or otherwise.
I do want to offer that it is rather unusual for. Multifamily housing to be a conditional use in a zone district for which it is established to allow for multifamily housing. Highly unusual that it requires a conditional use permit. Most communities would actually have multifamily housing as a use by right in a multifamily housing zone district. Doesn't mean it's not subject to site plan review and meeting development standards, but this level of public hearing scrutiny. For this situation is, I would say. Almost unique to Woodland Park. I'm not going to say there isn't somebody else out there who doesn't do it that way, but it is unusual.
Thank you.
Are you aware that that code change was reciprocated by a very controversial project? That we worked on and collectively, we kind of looked at and say, well, maybe the best way to address multifamily is to place them into the conditional use category for our. Additional scrutiny and review.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's unusual and having worked in other jurisdictions, Chelsea and I have both. Been somewhat taken aback by that. So this, it's definitely unusual based on years of, of practice in other locations, but. We respect what this community wants and so we're here to help you navigate that.
Okay, thank you.
And one question, Ken, we talked at the last meeting about sidewalks and. How sidewalk requirements would be addressed? Was that? Negated during discussion over the last two weeks?
I am not recalling where we left off.
Number five, I think one of the issues was sidewalks and you're looking at sidewalks or. So that.
It wasn't mentioned in the last submittal as I recall, and we haven't had it now.
Yeah, we asked that to be addressed. Whether there would be a payment for sidewalks or sidewalks would be identified and provided by the developer or payment in lieu of.
My recollection is that during our collective meeting with engineering and utilities. It was not determined at that time by the city engineer whether or not he would be requiring seasonally or the sidewalks to be built.
So that's where we stand. We don't know. We have no resolution, in other words.
Not at this time.
The applicant may have a better memory than the two of us, so I apologize for that.
Any other questions this time? I'd like the applicant to come forward, his name and address and enter the discussion, please.
Hi, Joe Kent, 94B, Cal Bank Corp, Colorado Springs. Thanks for having us again. That slide, I think they answer a few of your questions too. So I think Chelsea kind of explained most of these, that what we plan to do going forward, it will be a six foot. Cedar picket privacy fence along that boundary with threats is the plan, is also a retaining wall along that side of the property. Right next to threads and that is on the map. It's hard to see when they, we shrink it down to this size. Site plans are much larger in person. And then changes from the previous submittal, we did expand the driveway to 24 feet. Which was requested by this group as well as move that fire turnaround towards the end of property with in conjunction with the city. So we meet or exceed all the requirements for that zoning area. I don't think we need to go through all of them. But it was our understanding from the discussion we had with the city, the plan was to go with seasonally on the sidewalk, I don't know that made room. I think there's a, there hasn't been a determination on final cost there yet was the piece that we left it.
Okay, no, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. So the city engineers working on that will work with them to finalize those numbers as we move forward with project hopefully. So, and then we added in a color scheme. This is what we generally plan to be our color scheme. Again, we had left that out in the past. Because we do like working with our neighbors and they had asked, we had had a few asks to be involved in that discussion. So we didn't want to set one here. And then end up changing with them, but this is generally what we're planning. And then, of course, we, we do want to meet with them, make sure it's something in fitting with the community. That's a high striving point for us is to build projects that are in fitting with Woodland Park and in conjunction with the communities that we'll be surrounded by. Which I think we've done in all of our past projects and plan to do in our projects going forward. Especially this one in this particular area, they go make an improvement to the area again with the fencing around friends. Towing, which I'm sure you guys have seen before, what that property currently looks like, it should help that attractiveness of that neighborhood hopefully. For property that we have as well as properties. That was it on the slide. I don't remember if it was another question that you guys asked for us.
One, some people, which I think came up a bit, I, and I appreciate the adding the width 24 feet and this, with this density of users, 20 feet was gonna. It seemed like it was going to create a practical problem. Did that, did that reduce driveway lengths? One of my concerns is for the parking and driveways to be adequate for. For vehicles, which I think previously we've talked about 18 feet at least you want to allow for.
Yes, it did shrink our driveways a little bit, but we're still in compliance with that number. Previously, we were at 21 feet and so this will shrink it down to 19. So our driveways for each house will be 19 feet long. It should be adequate enough to fit two vehicles in.
Side by side.
Thank you.
Where have you addressed the intent of? Track A?
Oh, right.
And lot 13?
Yes, and track A is directly over, it's hard to see on the site plan when it's shrunk that small, so track A is directly over our retention plug. Which is specifically what it's for and we included that, I believe in our write-up, that that was what track A was for. 13, we're leaving that separate to not be developed, didn't add that language, but I don't think we added anything specifically to the site plan. There are some issues that we sought to work out on that property with encroachments and things like that. So we really are just kind of dividing that out. And ours, our acreage on the rest of the property that we have is, we're still under the developable land on that, that property on its own standalone without track 13.
Would you be opposed to a new condition, just saying that the plan will address those two things? Lot 13 being undeveloped at this time.
You just want us to add that note on. And then it's tracked A being over the top of the drainage pond and having that mentioned drainage pond, is that sufficient? Do you want us to add additional language?
I'd like to see a plan note, actually.
What?
Plan note.
Okay.
You, you have notes on your plan?
Yeah.
Just as a new note saying what, what these two things are for.
We can do that.
Okay.
Any other questions for applicant at this time?
Thank you.
It goes to the public hearing portion of our meeting. We have anybody signed up, David? Hey, anybody in the audience care to make comment? This will go to the internet and see if we have anybody on our chimera. Oh, sorry, please come forward. What's your name and address?
My name is Deanne, and I live at 1217 Stone Ridge. I appreciate the conversation you've had in front of us because it addressed some of the things I was very concerned about. And one, of course, my favorite is roads and traffic. And I think the, the previous plan had only one driveway for one car, but if you have. Families, if your goal is for families. Um, I believe that in 15 years, a baby could be getting his driver's license out and have a third car. And parking on the streets would be hard. The other thing that I have been considering is that you have asked all of the. Appropriate city. Departments, and I wondered if. Departments, and I wondered if the police department was included in having this tract of homes. And what I'm thinking about is safety for children and of course the sidewalks and lighting, I also think. I don't know if there's a space for a playground in this area, in this kind of area. And that's all I have for you, except for encouragement. I'd like to hear you talk back and forth. Because I don't know if you think of these things, and I'm sure you do, and when you have discussed it, I have trust in you. And of course, I'm concerned that, you know, many people are going to be moving into this area and construction. Uh, companies' only goal is to make money and without the human aspect. And so that's their goal and they need to meet their goal, but we have to constantly think of, you know, fifteen years from now. And I want to encourage you, there are going to be a lot of buildings around my neighborhood, and so I might be coming back to ask you questions, but. Um, those are the two things I would like you to think about is all the roads and the cars, and if the police have been asked. Um, for their input.
Anybody else in the audience? Do we have anybody online? Not seeing anyone? Another opportunity, anybody from the audience or online wishing to make comment? Not seeing none, last chance. The public hearing portion of the meeting is now closed. We'd like to ask the applicant if they'd like to respond to any questions, comments that were received.
Karen Obray, I'm with the property development. The only one I have is that we did meet with the parks board, so we do have communication on the medical process. So we did go in front of the parks board to present this project, and it was their opinion that if we have sufficient parks in that area and they requested it. But there was healthy discussion, and I think it's online, you can go back and watch it, but it's a really interesting meeting, and I think it's open to the public in the future. And then as for the concern in the future, my family's been here for over a hundred years. We've been talking about your family for a long time. They were a couple of people doing the money here as well. So we are not building things that aren't going to be pretty in fifteen years because my entire family.
All right, thank you. I guess for staff, please was. Form of the project, they have any comments?
Um, they were not a typical referral agency. Um, so that's something that's kind of hit the radar the past couple of planning commission meetings. Um, if you recall, I think it was plans at Stone Ridge where we had a gentleman. Uh, who had a different role in a different community, who brought up some very solid points around. Uh, potentially engaging the police more when as we, as we look at new projects. Uh, but that has not been part of our typical referral process prior to.
A question for staff, do you know if the police were involved in the comprehensive plan development?
Larry's shaking his head, yes.
I can answer that. I served in the, I served in the portion of dealing with, dealing with public safety. And the police were highly, highly involved in developing the, the, those portions of the comprehensive plan.
So there were areas that are zoned for multifamily in the comprehensive plan, and that was looked at by them at that time.
Thank you, John.
I guess since we have a very point comments, we have an option of fees and lieu versus actually installing sidewalks. I personally am a proponent of having the sidewalks installed. So that we have something, and then if there's a development east or west of the property, we continue that sidewalk. And for a multi-family, I think it's appropriate to have sidewalks installed, so. I would propose that. We make it physically installed sidewalks rather than just paying fees, like to have a discussion if there's any other comments.
So I did notice that the other side of the street is Bruce Haven, is fully sidewalked from corner to corner. The other side is none, so by the towing and the resident house that's at the other end of the street. Uh, there's no sidewalk there. Those are already built out. They may get bulldozed, built again at some point, but. Um, but this development is probably eighty percent of that other side of the street. So you could have sidewalk and then the city could potentially add the sidewalk to finish it, but I don't know if there's a. Plan to try and have both sides of each street sidewalk on metered roads like that. I know it is on quite a few, and some it's not. But the sidewalk does exist on the other side all the way. It definitely looks different having it on one side and not the other.
So are you supporting the installation of sidewalk or not?
I'm just questioning what, what's the goal? And I don't really have an opinion at this point. I'm waiting to be informed.
I was gonna just say from experience, the payment in lieu often results in no sidewalk at all for several years. Because the city has traditionally tried to consolidate those projects and do them all at once in order to be more cost efficient. And in the meantime, the applicant will have, or the developer will have paid for a sidewalk that never gets filled. Um, I tend to agree with Ken that, you know, if a sidewalk is a requirement, we put a sidewalk in. Um, but as the commission, do we have the authority to mandate that or simply recommend it to city council? That that be a requirement?
I think Chelsea's wrote that or our resolution more recently than I have. For sidewalks.
I, I don't know that I can speak to that, uh, but in generally, you can add a condition to your recommendation to city council. Is typically how that would be.
It has no teeth, it's just a recommendation.
I sense is the, the city council, of course, can do what they wish to do and could change anything we do, but I, I would expect that. The, the staff would put before a resolution to be proposed by the city council reflecting what the planning commission decided. And if the city council wished to change it, they certainly could. Am I missing something in the thought that that's what? What we approved as a resolution?
Uh, actually, with conditional use permits, the approval document is an ordinance. So, and in the ordinance, the couple that I prepared spelled out the, all of the conditions of approval. And so after the plant, or the city council has their hearing or is part of that, they can choose to amend or revise those conditions of approval. But what you guys recommend is what goes into the draft ordinance that's sent to them.
On the substance of the matter. I'm very sympathetic to the idea of requiring, requiring sidewalks now if, if it. If in fact someone, particularly engineering figures out it's a bad idea and it's not going to get extended if, if it's. If it doesn't go anywhere because of the other line, and it's not going to go anywhere. Maybe it doesn't make sense, but. From, from a multi-family development to, or. Not that long ago, but over to sixty-seven where there are sidewalks, it seems like a natural place to have it. I suppose it's feasible to cross that street. It's not that busy and take that sidewalk. But unless there's, in, unless it appears that we're never going to get a connection, I would think physically requiring a sidewalk seemed undesirable. And it's, it's where we want the sidewalks.
I'm not sure what the other infrastructure would be if there are stormwater culverts that have to, you know, stormwater that has to be put in also on that side of the street that exists or. What, what the other ramifications are. But it seems like the city engineers and the building department. We could, I think we could highly or strongly recommend that it would be desirable. I don't know. I didn't see anywhere in our.
Could we do a condition that said, recommend, commission is a condition that the sidewalks physically be built unless the city engineer determines. So sort of give the city engineer an opportunity, say that's a bad idea, if it is a bad idea. Does that allow the flexibility? Cause I'm not smart enough to know what really will ultimately work. Well, we heard testimony from the applicant that they did sit down with the city engineer and the city engineer at that time recommended fees and lieu. So I would support. Ha- having the recommending that sidewalk go there unless the city engineer has compelling reason not to.
Any other issues that should be brought to the table? Discussion?
Chelsea, could the recommendations that you had, I'm not sure if it, how, to what, how did they differ if from recommendations? Were presented, presented that I've got, that was in our, in the packet we got a week ago, and that had been looked at two weeks ago.
The recommendation did not change. What changed was more clarification in the staff report.
Okay, so those are.
I would like to ask the applicant a question I just discussed. The property elevation rises as it goes to the. West. West, thank you. And the Fred's towing is at the lower elevation. And so the properties that are backed up to that are fairly tall structure with windows that look right out into that lot. The six-foot privacy fence will not afford a lot of. View blocking, is there any landscaping option that you've considered to add additional buffering between the two properties?
Yeah, we have added trees back there, and there will be a retaining wall that'll bring that up a little bit along with a six-foot fence.
Okay.
And then the trees that we've put along that backside to try and cover any windows from facing directly into that, that building.
But we also know that Fred's moving. I don't know what kind of lot he, they will leave behind, but that may negate some of the issue.
Yeah.
According to the applicant last time, it sounded like that property was ripe for redevelopment.
Might be an opportunity to extend the sidewalk. Anything else for the other?
Uh, yes, was there any indications from the engineers about the sidewalk that? Showed why they would go with these rather than actually installing it?
So I think the discussion on the sidewalk, and that was the parks department board, like we talked about. And they was discussed there as well on both the park fees as well as the sidewalk. Ultimately, the determination came down to the fact that there was sidewalk on the other side of the road. And it was unlikely that those residential neighborhoods that are already built without sidewalk, whatever we develop or create or need to build sidewalk on the other side of the road. And so they determined that that didn't really make sense down sidewalk, and that was our same discussion in the meeting with city staff was there's a sidewalk on the other side of the road. We'd be adding maintenance costs for a dead-end sidewalk that may have safety issues because it's a dead-end sidewalk into undeveloped land. So that was ultimately the determination from our perspective is the same cost either way. So if you guys want a sidewalk, they will put a sidewalk there.
Thank you. Uh, is staff aware of a plan for sidewalk development in the city? Is there a master plan of proposed sidewalks? If fees were paid, where would that money be spent is my question.
You know, we're new enough, we've not had that conversation with the city engineer, we're. Yeah, no, just kind of that knowledge of this provision's in place. This is what's acceptable. Um, I believe that's primarily handled through the, um, the operations end of things. What the nuances and the details are of that. I'm, I've not had a briefing on that.
Yeah, I, I do not want to penalize the applicant because we've got this policy in place that does accept payment in lieu of. And when that money is collected, then as a municipality, we don't act upon that pot of money in a timely manner. Um, and that's just based on experience, and I've seen that happen, and it, it has caused some issues in the past. Um, but again, I don't want to penalize the applicant because. We could take their money and not put a sidewalk in for years, or we could require them to build a sidewalk to nowhere. So I don't, I don't know if we want to. Hold up this app, application because we're not certain if the sidewalk is going to be required.
Well, my understanding economically, it's the same effect to the project. They either instructed or take that money and put it to the city for future development, either on their property or possibly somewhere else in town. And so I think they would gain the benefit of having the sidewalk in front of their property. And again, with future development, maybe not towards residential, but to the east, there may be. Connection to that and the number of people in the proposed development sidewalk would seem be appropriate. Also given, if there were parking on the road, it'd be a good opportunity for those transitions. So. And again, what's our timeframe? We've talked about, you know, what's the cost of concrete today versus concrete in three years? And so if we do it three years, we only get half as much concrete. So taking the opportunity, maybe we should, again, I support the development of installing the concrete at this time. And with the energy engineers input.
Can you take sort of a mini poll to know what we're gonna finally do? Wouldn't we like to, if we're in connection with the voting and the recommendation, would we like to add a section seven, something like sidewalk shall be installed unless the city engineer determines. Such installation be undesirable, in which event fees and lieu should be required? Is that something useful?
That's great. I'm so glad you're here.
There's some others to, I, I'd like Mr. Commissioner Larson to come in a little on the condition relating to no, plan notes. I'm not sure I've got the sense for two, so. With this thought, I'll turn to you to add further, but.
The other thing I want to add is, y'all are really kind of struggling with a larger policy issue. Uh, cause right now you've got things in place that say we accept fees and lieu. You've got an engineer, a city engineer who said a fee in lieu is appropriate in this situation. Um, but I told, what I'm hearing is that you're wanting to revisit that larger policy conversation. Um, and how that gets applied through the city and how that gets implemented when those fees are collected. Um, so that's probably something that should be happening at a, a different place and not with a specific application in, in front of you. Um, especially since you've already got some of this input. Um, but, you know, I've kind of started a list of, of things that we need to, to revisit and, um, you know, water allocation. The waters, the city's water system is one of those, you know, in terms of tap allocation. And then, um, you know, revisiting sidewalks versus fee and lieu of when that's appropriate. Uh, probably curb and gutter needs to happen through some of that also, um, in terms of where, where that happens and where it doesn't. So there's, like I said, those are larger kind of policy things that then inform our rules and regulations, which, you know, the development committee then relies on as they propose projects.
Input from the city engineer or whoever powers be on what the plans are for sidewalks in the city. And thing, my understanding is that the fees paid in lieu go to, I guess, a muster's a general fund, but a, a specific fund. For sidewalks somewhere in town. And so if we're using this project to finance sidewalks by the high school or one of the other schools, I'd like to know what our objectives are. So we do need that information so we can make a more informed decision in the future. But based on this project, I think we have the opportunity to say yes or no, and I, I'm still support putting the sidewalks in.
Ken, I, I thought I heard the applicant say you had no problem with that. Can we ask the applicant to address that?
Yeah, again, and we've told every group along the way, we don't really, it's not a, a decision that we have a lot to care about, I guess. I don't know how to say that.
That sounds fine.
Either way, uh, whether it's feasibly or constructing the sidewalk for us, it's kind of the same cost. We're gonna be up there doing search work anyway. I mean, we tend to agree that it will be a dead-end sidewalk and unlikely to be undeveloped along that road with the rest of the sidewalk. But again, we're happy to put sidewalk in if you guys determine that.
Thank you.
That being said, I think Willie presented it as a motion that I, I still support that.
I guess, yeah, I certainly support that as well. The further question was, I think it's lot thirteen. Um, it is included in the PUD, and so if any development were to go forward someday in the future, we'd come back and revise the PUD. Or what would be that process?
This is not a PUD. It, it would depend on the use that's proposed for that portion. So if that use is a conditional use. So if that use is a conditional use in the multifamily zone district, then it would need another conditional use permit. If it's, uh, for multifamily, it would fall under this conditional use permit.
The conditional use that we're approving isn't associated with the site plan and this development. It's, if any future, any, any future multifamily use of the remainder is, is being approved by this condition use exemption.
So that's. I don't think so. What the, your, your documents that come out of this process are, um, the conditional use permit and then a site plan. So the note would show up on the site plan that, that goes with this property. In terms of, um, what happens next, um, there is a, a subdivision plot that's going to be happening to set up these, these different tracks. And then ultimately a, a townhome plot. Uh, we had a little bit of a discussion earlier today in terms of the, the sequence and timing and if those could somehow run concurrently. Um, we've not, and that was literally at the end of the day, so we've not had a chance to double check, you know, process and timing around that. But it's. And, and I personally think that the, the conditional use permit applies to this, this main tract where the twelve duplexes or this, the twelve dwelling units are going. To, to come back in for that track thirteen and develop at that point, that gets looked at. And, um, you know, if they're proposing additional multifamily at that point, that would be a, another visit to, to you all for the, the conditionally, the ordinance associated with that, the conditional use per.
Certainly carrying that was my attempt by. Asking we have as a requirement that that plot thirteen be identified as undeveloped. So if it is to be developed in the future and just like Chelsea said, you know, it depends on the, huh, this, the zoning, but it's not included to be multifamily at this time.
Yeah, I don't know that I would list it as undeveloped, but flagged for potential future development.
Is, does a note reflect what you're saying? Is it not currently approved for development? That reflects the fact that it would come back again if it's going to be developed.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too.
Any other comments from the commission?
Well, I'm, I'm still very concerned about the information we received from city utilities. Water allocation for this particular project. It's beyond really the control of the applicant at this time, but I think it is definitely in control of the city on how we allocate water taps in the future. And this particular project exemplifies. Borrowing taps today for a particular project that's going to be required. Another project down the line to give up, if you will, their allocated water for, for their particular project. And. We know we have water available, might have in the future, we might secure water in the future, additional water for use. But going the availability of water in. Our community in Colorado and Western United States is, is limited. And we'll be competing against Colorado Springs, Aurora. Other communities for, for every drop of water that, that could come available. So I'm still concerned. Yes, this project complies with the campus plan for multifamily. It fits with the zoning for this property. So the use is okay. My major concern at this time is just the allocation of water.
I'll address that. In theory, we're gonna run out of water, available taps sometime down the future. And we don't have a criteria for selecting which projects get water at this time. So it's kind of a first come, first served situation. And these people are here asking for water. And we don't know what future allocations, it hasn't been allocated. It's been anticipated that it'll be used for so many events. But it hasn't been allocated any particular properties and any particular development. So. My understanding is, you know, it's a first come, first served situation. And if we get enough people next year to use up all our water taps, we're done. And if there's another twenty years.
It, it'll be slowed down by those.
Yeah, so there's certain limitations anyway, but eventually we're gonna run out of that water until we get more water allocations. But, uh, I don't see that as a hindrance to this project.
I'd like to comment, it's in summary, an increase in residential densities can be supported on the short term because the city currently has the water to serve additional multifamily units. And so it was kind of, you know, he was saying, it's just how much vacant land do we have? There's amount of development. If you put them here, you're gonna use them or you're gonna put them there, you're gonna use them. So the question is, do we not issue? Conditional use permits? So that somebody can build something else somewhere else when he wants to build something now? I don't know how you decide that.
I, I think it, it's a larger effort.
And. Agreed.
And this, like I said, this particular project exemplifies this particular issue. And we spent a lot of time during the conference planning effort to say, we need to develop an awareness plan to do just what you said. That's a, is there, would you, do we want to continue with the first come, first served philosophy? Or do we want to try to encourage priority uses? And, and do we want to protect the rights of other people that have water allocated or they're coming from? So I'm, I, I'm just trying to. Always have the community be aware of this particular issue. We need to proceed on trying to find those solutions.
Well, with no further discussion, um, we'll be looking for a motion.
Ask Commissioner Brown to do that.
Thank you very much to Lee.
Okay, try to admit, please feel free to comment. I. I move that we adopt the rec, the staff recommendation regarding this project subject to the following additions. That we added a paragraph seven, reading sidewalk shall be installed unless the city engineer determines such installation to be undesirable, in which event fees in lieu shall be required. And that item eight be added, reading the site plan should be modified to include a note on lot thirteen, reading. Quote, not currently applied, approved for development, unquote. It doesn't add anything for, for track A, but. But I think that it was sort of already covered by the drainage usage.
Yes.
Like, get it?
Second.
Very good. I guess we look for a vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Christian Kennedy?
Yes.
Fisher Larson?
No.
Chair Hertzfield?
Yes.
Chris Brown?
Yes.
Four one.
Very good, thank you. Takes us to our second. Reproducing the same procedures before. This is for CUP, this PR. Twenty twenty-two dash zero three, extension of U-Pass, only Woodland Parks. Self-storage Conditional Use Permit and Site Plan Review. A request by M3 XP two LLC and nineteen three fifty group LLC. For two-year extension on the CUP and SPO approved by, for the. Seventy-two thousand four hundred square foot storage and rental facility proposed on the four-point-seven-five acre tract of lot one, Woodland Parks, out of club filing number one in the service commercial zone. Having opened this discussion, as I personally have had involvement in the project in the past. And in past occurrences where this has come before planning commission, I have recused myself. I will also be recusing myself from this issue this evening. Rachel Brown will be conducting the public.
Will you be here? Are we, we have some actions under this. Karen, do we have things after this? So can you just stay?
I'll remain in the building, though, excuse myself.
It's a special place for those people.
Can we start with a staff presentation?
Sure. Thank you. As the item was announced, um, this is a request to, um, extend a conditional use permit and site plan approval. For a self-storage and rental facility that's proposed at nineteen three fifty highway twenty-four in the service commercial zone. The planning commission here is tonight, city council is slated to hear this on June sixteenth. So here is a vicinity map to help orient everyone with, um, the, the layout of Woodland Park, where their typical horseshoe. And it's down here on the southeast side of things, just north of the Walmart that was developed. In regard to zoning, they said the area is zone surface commercial. It's part of this larger dark purple area. You do have a couple of different zone districts across the street and then that PUD zoning for the Walmart development to the southeast.
Karen, I just want to interrupt real briefly here to read a note from the. Bylaws and rules of procedure for the city of Woodland Park Planning Commission. Section six, a quorum.
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna ask.
Five or more of all, the commission members shall constitute a quorum for conducting business at any meeting. No action shall be taken in the absence of a quorum, except to adjourn the meeting to a subsequent date.
Okay, uh, for some reason I was thinking four was quorum, so my apologies.
Well, I appreciate. The chair's wish to recuse himself because he had previously heard this. The truth is, I heard this many years ago myself, but I don't feel a reason when it was on city council. I don't see a reason to recuse myself, so I'm not sure why Commissioner Hertzfield needs to do that.
He had relayed to me that he actually had a, a role in this upfront.
Professionally was involved in early concept, I think.
We just have six members of the blank mission these days after Al resigned.
Yes.
So all we need is.
Sean to join online.
Right. I think it's clear. I don't think we did any action yesterday.
Yes, no, I did not, um, like I said, I'm used to seeing forward to quorum. So thank you for that, Ken. So what happens when you're new and you read all that good stuff?
That's what you do.
Can you go get Mr. Hertzfield?
All right, well.
So can Mr. Hertzfield be back in a moment, so?
Yeah, I, I don't think we should put him in the position of having to, he, he's, he's reasonable reasons.
Can he attend and not, oh?
No.
Cause he's working on it.
So, so is this going to be continued to our next regular meeting then?
If that's what pleases the board. My concern with, uh. Yeah. Please have a seat.
Should he?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're gonna talk continuation.
We're not talking specifically about this project. We're talking about.
My understanding with my refusal, there's not a quorum.
See. Yeah. So, and we were just about to talk to, talk about, um, date for continuation. My concern with continuing it to the, um, his June ninth meeting is that you have a, a potentially very lengthy item that evening. So I was really trying not to put anything else on the agenda that night. So I would actually recommend the second meeting in June, uh, for this item to be continued to that particular date.
Well, another option too is a special meeting if enough of us are available.
We would have to sort that out, but meanwhile you all have to continue this to a date in time certain.
If I may, Eric Smith with Matrix Design Group. So there is a timeline as it relates to getting this approved that requires city council to approve it. In a certain period of time, otherwise the timeframe runs out and the cup cannot be renewed. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind as you try to, uh, because the cup is good for two years. The timeframe is coming up. I believe that's in July. And so if this moves.
July nineteenth.
Yeah, so if this moves to a point that city council hears it past that point, then potentially, uh, you know, this cup would expire.
But it's also my understanding because you submitted the request for the extension, you've met your requirement. And should not be penalized for our scheduling issues.
I, I, I think that, I think that is our practice. It's an informal practice which hasn't been documented. There, there is some history regarding this particular matter on extensions, which may have created some concern by the applicant expressing. The last time it was extended, uh, Mr. Lars, Commissioner Larson, may remember. The request came in many months after the expiration. And in fact, it was only by a, I think like a four to three vote. That planning commission moved it on to the city council with a view that one can't extend an expired. And an expired conditional use permit. In, in its wisdom, the planning commission at that time, a year, well over a year ago, decided to extend anyway. I, I think our practice, however, is, let's say that if it comes, if the application is prior to the expiration. Then that's, that's acceptable. This would be, this entire area is one that could use some clarification probably and, you know, some revised code language.
Well, and the application was submitted, I believe it was in April. Um, so they were, you know, you on it in, in advance of that, that July expiration.
This time they, this.
Yeah, so this really, this, the tonight, this really is a, a quorum issue. Which. Yeah, like I did not realize Christian Nielsen, somehow I, I didn't realize that she was going to be here this evening.
I, I, I'd recommend that we do move it to the. The. June ninth meeting, even though it's, it's a heavy agenda. I, I.
Or, or we, we could continue the June ninth meeting and if staff, if staff is of opinion that it's not wise because of timing or other scheduling things. And a new date could be organized by them or put on. June twenty-third, whatever's the date, either one to work, but we do need a date certain to continue.
Because I had moved that we, we continue this to two nights. Our next meeting.
I would think that since we met the application deadline and the full agenda we have for our next meeting. Unless there's objection from the applicant, that we continue to the.
Does that work, all right, from your standpoint? Okay, I'm okay with that.
But meanwhile, you have a motion on the table for two nights. No second, mind you, but there's a motion.
Yeah.
Rescinded?
So I think Commissioner Hertzfield kind of asked the applicant a question. I kind of look at these things that, you know, applicants kind of have rights to move things along in a timely manner. And so I would request on behalf of the applicants that it does get moved to the ninth. I do understand that there might be a larger, uh, item that evening, but you know, it's not the applicant's. Fault that there couldn't be a quorum here this evening. So that would be the request of my client. So that would be the request of my clients, uh, that it does get moved to the next.
June ninth is going to maybe a June problem as well. I have reason to believe it might be.
So meanwhile, you have a motion on the table. I'm sorry, I'm taking, I'm taking your role as the chair, but.
Well, we've got that, another quorum issue.
Well, that's addressed this issue and the quorum is separate. So we do have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Very well.
Christopher Kennedy?
Yes.
Fisher Larson?
Yes.
Chair Hertzfield?
Yes.
Uh, Chris Brown?
No.
Fisher Hervey?
Yes.
So the item's been continued to June ninth at six thirty.
Yes.
Blue's are above hearings for the evening. Uh, takes us to reports.
I did not have anything to, um, talk about this evening specifically. Um, like I talked about in the meeting a little bit, started a, a list of other things I'd like to do workshops with you all on. One is, um, to have, um, Kip Wiley, Director of Operations come in and, and provide an overview for. The city's water tap allocation system and how all that functions and works, just so you have some more background information on that. And then it sounds like, uh, we potentially need to revisit, uh, policy and potentially amend. Uh, either regulations or, or resolution, wherever that is with regard to fees and lieu of for sidewalks. Uh, since it sounds like you're not completely comfortable with what's currently in place.
I guess the quorum issue maybe. No, that was come a different, different question, uh, occurring question. Consultant who would. Work on the comprehensive plan presumably still has in process.
It should be a report. Thank you. Um, I just had a conversation with, um, Jen from Logan Simpson. And asking her to, uh, prepare some, um, uh, basically a, a, a letter of proposal to help us carry. That forward in terms of, of doing the, the rest of that review and adoption. Uh, I, for a couple of reasons, one is, you know, staffing and work volume, you know, needing some additional assistance. And then that other aspect is, I think that helps with, um, the continuity for that whole project. Since your primary place that you implement the comprehensive plan really is through our code and regulations. And to have that crossover from folks that were here through the heart of the comprehensive plan, plan process. Uh, would, would help with all of that, especially since your, your core planning staff turned over. So you don't have that in-house institutional memory or participation in that process. Uh, so, um, I don't have that, those figures back from her, uh, but, um, I talked to the city manager about it. He's supportive. But that, that's, that's where I am in terms of picking that project back up and getting it moving again.
Speaking of the city manager, has he made any decision on, uh, the public forum on short-term rentals?
I have not heard anything with regard to a date for that. I know it's definitely still on the radar.
Okay.
But just one quick question, any applicants for the planning commission out there?
Uh, not to my knowledge. Okay, so please feel free to, um, do some recruiting. And then meanwhile, quorum issues on the ninth, what do I need to know? Okay, we can do that.
I do have a comment. Um, when we changed our time to six thirty, I noticed in the documents I was reviewing that we have a end time. Limit that when we reach eleven PM, we are supposed to, uh, make a motion, I believe, to adjourn and continue. And, um, that didn't change when we changed our start time to six thirty. I didn't know that we need to. But for some people's interest, there may be a time limit that would be more appropriate. That that maybe should be ten thirty, since we started thirty minutes earlier than the previous start time. Just wanted to bring the idea up for discussion for the future.
And if, if, if the curfew is based upon being too late at night or being inability to stand more than four hours of proceedings.
It's both.
Yeah.
We'd be out here at eight o'clock.
Um, a, a, and if I may make a, a comment about, um, any issues with a quorum on the ninth. Um, it, it is possible to consider another day as long as we do public notices if not.
Um, I still need whoever's available on the ninth to show up. Uh, and if we don't have a quorum, then we need to do continuances because I've got. Public hearings that were noticed for that day and time.
Oh, okay.
You know, they're, they're already out there. Yeah.
Gotcha.
I do have a June twenty-third, uh, camping trip scheduled, but I don't know that I have to leave right at, you know. So that's the next one after the ninth, right? The twenty-third.
Yes.
We'll get you out here by ten thirty.
I can set the ten up at two in the morning. But, um, there is on, online options, correct?
Yes.
You can attend. Uh, but I don't know, driving through the mountains, which is going to work very well, but really.
Well, maybe we should just kind of take a quick poll. Who, who is going to be available on Tuesday night?
Even if we had Sean, if you're not here and he recruit chooses. We're not going to be able to hear. He can be involved.
But I wouldn't curse myself from the continuing project. I'd be available for other issues.
Okay.
Anything else?
Sorry.
It's seven forty-seven, meeting is adjourned.